Well, welcome to our School District 6 Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, September 24th, 2018. This meeting will now come to order. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge remains to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, by the nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. Jewitt?
Present.
Mr. Haley?
Present.
Mr. Lydiak?
Mr. Lydiak is excused this evening.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Dr. Richard?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Present.
Six members present.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, this evening we've got all kinds of things on our schedule and we normally chat a little bit about sort of the three key words for the school district of engage, empower, and inspire. And I think there are a number of things that'll be going on tonight, so I'll allow the audience to find their own indication of engagement and inspiration or an empowerment. But I do want to say something that did inspire this evening, and that was the chance to have a little dinner with some of our brand-new administrators in the school district. And they've come to the school district enthusiastically and looking forward to the diversity of 23,000 students in our school district and who are pleased and ready to take the challenge of making the school district six even better. So certainly that was an inspiration for me. The next item, which is no small item this evening, is the hearing of persons desiring to speak before the board. And some people might think that would be a scary thing to do, but of course, there's no re-- we're just a bunch of folks sitting up here to hear what you have to say. So we're delighted that you've taken the opportunity to speak before the board. And many of you may have specific things that you'd want to say, and we have some translation that will be available, thank goodness. But if you feel you're about to repeat something that has already been said, you're permitted to not have to repeat it. That's okay, you can do that. But we're delighted to have you here and to hear from you. The first person who is going to speak, I'll identify by name, and I also want to say, we usually don't respond to speakers in the meeting. We'll catch the information as it's been shared to us, and then staff members will pursue the information, your contact information, to make sure that we communicate well with you after the meeting. So thank you for coming this evening and doing this with us. The first speaker about the--
I'm sorry, but they need to hear that.
Yeah, if you would allow me, I'm sorry. Just wave at me. We were making eye contact and then I got excited.
I was waiting for you to finish. I was trying to make mental note of everything you--
Take any of that and share it.
Okay. Les queremos agradecer que estén aquí en esta tarde para compartir esta junta con nosotros. Les vamos a dar la oportunidad de hablar a las personas que llenaron la carta. Les pedimos, por favor, que si alguien ya dijo algo que no lo repitan, que sea algo este nuevo. Igualmente ellos no les van a contestar sus preguntas. Lo que van a hacer, les van a dejar llegar la información por medio de los que trabajan con ellos. Van a ganar su información, su teléfono, y ellos se van a poner en comunicación con ustedes para contestar su pregunta, okay?
Brilliant, and you caught that last promise to follow up. And your name, sir, just so everyone knows, we're in this together.
My name is Joe Ortiz, a teacher at Heath, sir.
Mr. Ortiz, and we thank Mr. Ortiz for his work. The first speaker this evening is about the transportation of students, and it's Maria Cristina Alfaro. Maria, please, come to the--
Maria va a hablar de la transportación de los estudiantes, pásale. Hable en el micrófono, por favor.
My name is Maria Cristina Alfaro de Cárdenas, and I vengo representando-- Venimos poquitos padres de familia, pero somos demasiado los que tenemos preocupación por nuestros hijos, por la transportación, por su seguridad.
Déjeme hablar poquito a poquito, okay? Okay, there's a few of us here today, but there are many parents who are worried about the safety through the transportation of our kids.
Aquí conmigo tengo la solicitud para ver si nos pueden regresar la transportación para los alumnos.
We have a petition here for to see if you guys can return the transportation to some of the routes that have been taken away.
La mayoría de nosotros estamos preocupados por la seguridad de nuestros hijos.
The majority of us are worried about the safety of our children.
Todos nosotros trabajamos, y casi la mayoría de nosotros trabajamos en la matanza, en la lechería.
All of us work, and the majority of us work at JBS and in the dairy industry.
En el campo. Somos los padres que estamos preocupados porque nuestros hijos aprendan más que nosotros, porque nosotros nunca fuimos a la escuela.
We are the parents that are worried that our kids should learn more than we did because we didn't go to school.
Nosotros estamos preocupados por su seguridad.
We're worried about their safety.
Nosotros nos vamos muy temprano a trabajar.
We go to work very early sometimes.
Los dejamos a ellos con la responsabilidad de que tienen que ir a la escuela porque es su responsabilidad.
And we leave them with the responsibility of getting to school because it is their responsibility.
Pero es muy doloroso escuchar lo que les pasó en el camino.
But sometimes it's hurtful to hear what happens to them along the way to school.
Que llegan, "Mamá, me tocó venirme caminando," y en la calle fulana de tal olía marihuana. "Mamá, me tocó venirme caminando," y un señor que iba en el carro me dijo tantas cosas.
She hears stories like, "Mom, on the way home walking, I smelled marijuana everywhere." Or, "On my way home walking, a man slowed down and yelled obscenities at me from his car."
También estamos muy preocupados porque sí los excusa en la escuela cuando llegan en el bus de la ciudad, pero son 25 minutos o 30 minutos los que llegan tarde. Si la primera hora es de matemáticas y si no lo entienden, ¿qué va a ser de ese niño? Ya no va a querer seguir estudiando.
We are conscious that the school will excuse them for getting there late, but it isn't so much about that. Sometimes it's taking them 25 to 30 minutes to get to school, and they're late. And if it's like a math class, they're missing out on all that instruction.
Aquí tengo la solicitud para--
I have a petition here. I don't know who to give the petition to. And we thank you for that.
Gracias.
Thank you very much. The next person on my list is, I'm not reading very well, Fatima? Fatima?
And I apologize, I cannot translate for Fatima.
Fatima speaks English. That's wonderful. And your name is? Welcome.
Thank you. What's the language in the board? Yo, barantegi malen nashen. She's saying I'm greeting everybody. And--
We'll need to have you speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
We don't want to miss a thing.
Okay. She said, "Good evening, everybody, the board members and the parents who are here today." I'm from the community, of Somali community. I'm representing the Somali community. I'm always with them, going to their houses. I know everything that's going on, and I've seen they have a lot of problem transportation for going to school and from school. Some parents, they don't even have driving license. They can't drive their kids due to being new to the United States. Some of them, they go like second shift, so they are not there the time the kids are coming out. So somebody else is, she asks a neighbor or a friend to pick the kids. So I've seen with my own eyes people who are driving like 11 kids in one car, and I was so worried for them. So it's not safety, it's not safe to drive so many people in one car. Some of them are sitting on the floor, others are like they are squeezing because there's only one person who is available for like a whole neighborhood going to that school. Some parents, they are there, but they can't drive. They don't have a car. They don't know how to drive. That's why like they have to have so many kids in one car because that's the only car, the guy who can drive them. And the kids go one time to school and one time out. So there's no time of saying like, "I'll come back for you, stay around." Like in the elementary, they have to take them on time and bring them on time.
Middle school--
So they talk among themselves and say, "You go to the middle school, and this one goes to elementary school." They have maybe three cars, and there are so many kids. Because one family, they have like so many kids, some of them. One family has eight kids, others have 11, others have 10, others have three, so. Cars, and they just pile them together. So we are requesting the board members and anybody responsible to do something for these kids, to give them transportation, safe transportation to and from school, please. In the high school, the big kids, they walk.
Yes.
Some of them, they miss classes because of that. So they are going to be called because the kids are missing school several times. They're going to go and be seen in a--
Court.
Like court and things like that because of-- Please, please, we are asking if you can help us to get the transportation schedule for the kids.
And we thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Mahazzanit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person who's interested in speaking about public transportation for elementary children, and this is Carla Del Carpio from the UNC campus. Welcome, Carla. You speak English, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I speak some English.
Okay, we do too.
Just a little bit, un poquito de inglés, buenas tardes. So my name is Carla Del Carpio, and I'm an assistant professor in the Department of Hispanic Studies at the University of Northern Colorado, and I'm fluent in both languages. First of all, I'd like to thank the School District 6 Board members for taking the time to meet with us this evening. Muchas gracias. Second of all, I'd like to congratulate the parents for getting together for such an important cause, which is our children's well-being. Their children, my children, everyone's children. I'm glad that we have in this meeting-- Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. I'm glad that we have in this meeting tonight because as Professor Esther DeYoung argues, in order to create and implement quality education, teachers, students, students' parents, and different members of the community need to work together as a team, which is what I am seeing that is happening right now. So that's the first step. The lack of transportation is an urgent issue that needs to be addressed because it affects our children physically, academically, and even emotionally. Walking to school involves having to get up much earlier, especially during the winter time, since walking becomes a lot more difficult and also dangerous. Having our children walk to school during times of extremely cold, cold weather, is not humane at all because it exposes our children to serious cold injuries, including hypothermia. Eso no es humano. That's not humane. Starting the school day with fatigue and cold places our children at a total disadvantage when compared to those who do have transportation and other resources. Children who have, could have the best instructors or other great resources at the school, however, as mass limitations, if basically such as food, shelter, clothing, sleep, safety are not being met, learning cannot take place. So this is the first step in order to improve education. In other words, we need to make sure that our children's basic needs are being met, and transportation is one of them. UNESCO and UNICEF state that quality education is a human right. Therefore, each of us, everyone here, is responsible for facilitating the access to it. We need a human educational system who cares for the well-being of their children, of my children, of everyone's children. So providing transportation to them would be a clear and solid sign of this improvement, which would also show that our society's priorities are more than clear. And our priority number one is people. In this case, our kids, our children. So muchas gracias. Thank you very much for listening to me, to us. Gracias.
Thank you. The next person who's interested in speaking about transportation for students is Monica Perez Nunes. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Monica Perez. I'm a student at UNC, too. Well, I'm a student at University of Northern Colorado. I speak some English, too. My first language is Spanish, and I'm here to support our community. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak to you guys. I would like to start by sharing this quote. "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world," by Nelson Mandela. In this opportunity, I will ask myself, how are we supporting our future leaders or members of our community? I come here to share a small and important piece of information that I have seen in our East community of Greeley. First of all, parents are trying to do everything that is in their hands to support their educational path for their children. For example, the incredible high load of work they put in their shoulders. All the work and the endless hours of effort they take is not to become rich or millionaire. It is to survive and to ensure that their children will have an opportunity to be educated and to improve their future because without education, there is no future. Also, we're here so what is called equity in our educational system. How is this possible that something that was promised, and these promises did not come true? For example, what if our gas state producers decide to keep their gas sources to themselves and not share with us because we do not have the equipment or materials to produce our own gasoline? I honestly think that our community needs the same opportunities that everybody else have. Our children need to be able to go to school, to be educated, to have support, and not having to put themselves and others in danger while trying to attend to school with the few sources they have. Furthermore, we want our children to continue going to school and not to sacrifice their education for getting a job to help their siblings going to get to school. What society are we living in if we do not support education for our children? To conclude, I would like to say what Jane Cash said. "Growth is never by mere chance. It's the result of forces working together." And the people of Greeley needs to start working together for a better future in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker who wishes to speak about transportation is Madeline Millian. Doctor, welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to come in front of you and share my worries and concerns that I share with a group of very dedicated parents who are here today. I am a long-term resident of Greeley, and I'm also a professor at the University of Northern Colorado. I wanted to let you know that I was a strong supporter of 3A. I knocked on doors, I collected signatures, I talked to my neighbors, I did everything what I could possibly do to help an initiative pass. And of course, I celebrated when it passed because I know how beneficial it would be for our students and for our teachers. One of the messages that I heard while I was speaking to parents was the problem about transportation and the detrimental effect that it was having on students. And so I was really hoping that once 3A passed that we could get, become really serious about this problem and fund our transportation needs. So I am a professor, so as part of that, I always look at research, and I wanted to share with you some of the research that we know of about low-income communities and immigrant communities. We know that some of the problems that parents have shared today are very common to those communities who have low-income communities, who have lack of access to public transportation, and some of our communities in Greeley do not have good access to public transportation. We know that research has connected many of the factors that we experience in low-income community to low academic success and dropout rate. We also know that consistent attendance in schools is essential for kids to develop good connections, appropriate connections to schools, and good relationships with teachers. And we also know that having safe and reliable transportation is key to success in education. In fact, one of the top five reasons in looking at inequalities and the consequences of inequalities is lack of transportation. So we really are talking about a concern that has been documented as a real problem for kids who, particularly for high school kids, when either graduating on time or graduating at all. So it is a serious concern when we look at it in terms of graduation rates. And finally, we all know how important graduating from high school is for our high school students and for their family members. So we are all concerned with high school graduation rates, and I really, we can connect transportation access to graduation rates. As a concerned member of this community, I would encourage you to think of this topic that has been brought by this concerned parents as a priority in your budget, as you're planning for your budget for the rest of this year and next year. I know that you have been a dedicated board, a board that has shown a great deal of concern for this community, for our teachers, and for our students, and that is very evident. And so I would leave you with saying that lack of transportation should not be a factor to prevent our students to be successful in school. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. The next person who wishes to speak about transportation for schools is Kresha Noor. And you'll correct my pronunciation, I hope?
It's okay, Kresha Noor. Thank you again. My name is Kresha Noor. I work at Sunrise Health, Sunrise Clinic, and I see so many folks of different communities, and I'm really advocating for the Somali community because I translate for them in the clinic. And what I've noticed is about how for them having transportation issue for the school, for the kids to go to school, most of them will like when they have even an appointment at the clinic, and they need to go and take the kids to the school, and they have only one car, they'll just opt not to go to the doctor and take the kid to the school. So they are dedicated parents, and they want their kids to be better than them because then they have never had opportunity to go to school. And if there is transportation issue from the school districts, it's going to make them their hope and everything fail because they were hoping if they come here to the United States, they have, going to have, their kids have better future more than them. And if there's this problem, this is that came, I don't know, I think there was a long time ago, I came in 2008, there was a lot of transportation issues. Every kid who used to go to school with the buses and stops everywhere, but I had, there was no transportation again, and everybody in the community is having that problem. And I think everybody else said the same thing, and I'm just hoping you guys to help us out for that, for all the kids to have safe time to go to school and back to be at home safely and warm. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. The next person interested in speaking about transportation for students is Pausa.
Hi, my name is Pausa. I work at Sunrise Community Health also with Kresha. And I would like to talk about, like, I came here for behalf of Bami's community. Yeah, they are, most of them are like a refugee migrant, so most of them are not really how to drive, just studying here at the United States. So when I work at the Sunrise, they came to the clinic, and they talking about like a transportation, they doesn't know how to learn about how to drive. So, and then they don't know how to send to the kids to the school. So they talking about that, and that's why I'm here for behalf of Bami's community. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. The next person is Ed Wijes. I'm not pronouncing that, but I can't read it very well. Alfaro? And help me with this pronunciation, please.
Edubiges Alfaro de Garcia.
Edubiges, Edubiges Alfaro de Garcia.
Estoy aquí como todos los padres de familia, preocupados por la educación de vuestros hijos.
I'm here because like every parent here, we are worried about the education of our children, the safety of our children.
Como todos hemos dejado muchas cosas atrás. Hemos dejado nuestra gente, nuestro país, por buscar una mejor vida para nuestros hijos.
Like everybody else in here, we have left a lot behind in search of a better future for our children.
A los padres nos duelen los hijos, y nosotros como padres aguantamos demasiado el dolor, aguantamos frío, aguantamos hambre, pero no aguantamos que nuestros hijos sobran porque venimos a buscar una mejor educación y una vida digna para ellos.
The biggest pain that a parent will feel is the pain suffered by their children. We can withstand a lot of pain as people, but when we see our children suffer, that's the biggest pain that anybody can feel.
Vengo de Michoacán, llegué a Kansas, de Kansas llegué aquí a Colorado. En una ocasión, Araceli nos invitó a una reunión.
I came from the state of Michoacán in Mexico, settled in Kansas first, and now I came here.
A una reunión a la cual acudimos, y aquí veo caras conocidas. Nos pidieron en ese momento el apoyo para buscar como votos para que estuvieran aquí ustedes.
So we-- Araceli invited us to a meeting where I saw a lot of familiar faces that I've been seeing today. At that point, we were asked to help get votes to pass the 3A mill levy, and I remember us telling you guys that we would support you.
Hicimos labor de convencimiento con algunos vecinos.
We talked to neighbors.
Y sabemos que en ese momento ustedes nos pidieron el apoyo a nosotros.
You guys asked us for your support, for our support at that time.
Ajá, y ahorita nosotros estamos aquí pidiéndoles el apoyo para que nos regresen el transporte para nuestros hijos. el transporte para nuestros hijos.
So we are here to ask you now for your support and to return the transportation that once was for our children.
Es la preocupación de todos nosotros. Nosotros queremos que nuestros hijos sean algo en la vida, que nos...
We want our children to be something in life, and this is one of the biggest priorities right now.
Porque lo que vinimos a buscar.
Because this is what we came here to look for.
Porque dicen que es un país de oportunidades, por eso estamos aquí.
We were told that this was a land of opportunity, and that's why we're here.
Yo sinceramente me preocupo por mi hijo, pero me preocupan también los demás, porque tenemos que pensar también en los demás, no nada más en nosotros mismos.
My son worries me, but I also worry about the children of all my community.
De ahí venimos y de ahí somos, así tenemos nuestros principios, nuestras costumbres, que hay que ver por los demás también.
That community is where we come from. We always take care of each other and worry about each other's children.
Queremos la educación para que ellos no sufran lo mismo que nosotros hemos sufrido, el idioma que nos trajeron aquí.
We would like for them to have the education, especially the language, so that they don't go through what we're going through now.
Porque él no siente que aquí se lo come el mundo a uno, y por eso aguantan los trabajos que tiene que aguantar. Trabajos duros, trabajos que se desgasta uno, trabajos que tiene que descuidar uno a sus hijos, trabajos que no saben si los hijos regresan o no regresen. Y se viene uno a las cinco de la mañana y regresar hasta las ocho de la noche, llegar a dormir, y dónde queda la familia.
The type of work that we do is the type of work that will eat you up, working long hours, working different shifts. Sometimes we don't know, or we are forced to leave our kids unattended and so on, and those are the type of worries that we suffer with or that we deal with.
Por eso quiere el transporte.
And that's what we're asking for you guys to help us with transport, so at least we know that their kids are on a bus and not walking home.
Que no está bien como están nuestros hijos transportando ahorita, que van en carro particular, pero van de amontón. Se la agarró policía, se hizo un accidente.
She's reiterating the fact that there has to be, they're driving many, many kids in one car, and they're worried about police officers stopping them for having too many kids in a car.
Y de verdad gracias, y gracias por escucharnos y por recibirlos.
Thank you and thank you for listening to us and for receiving us.
Thank you. The next person who is interested in this topic of transportation is Marta Espinoza. Welcome.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Marta Espinoza, y nada más tengo cuatro preguntas.
I just have four questions.
¿Qué porcentaje de aumenta, qué porcentaje aumentó los retrasos con la falta de camiones?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
¿Qué porcentaje aumentó en los retrasos por la falta de los camiones?
What percentage were the negatives? How did they increase without the old school routes? I'm not following. Por favor.
I'm trying to translate this. She's saying, what is the percentage that increased or decreased being late or tardy response?
Oh, okay. Eso es, del que llegan tarde a la casa?
Sí.
Oh, retrasos, okay. All right, so did the level of tardiness increase with the cutting back of the routes?
¿En qué porcentaje aumentaron las ausencias por falta de camiones?
What, how much did the absenteeism increase because of the cutting back of the routes?
¿Cuál es el impacto negativo de un estudiante que diariamente llega tarde a la primera y más importante clase?
What is the impact, or the negative impact of the student who daily, almost on a daily basis, gets to school late for his first class, and most of the time it's his most important class?
¿Cuántos niños menores de doce años?
How many children who are less than twelve years old?
Tienen que caminar diario.
Have to walk daily.
Hasta cuatro o seis, ocho cuadras.
Four or six to eight street blocks.
Estoy preocupada.
I am worried.
Por todos esos niños y por todos esos estudiantes que no tienen una forma segura de llegar a la escuela.
Who don't have a secure way.
Y regresar a casa.
To get to and from school.
Y estoy preocupada por el gran problema social que se puede incrementar.
I am worried because this could lead to a great social problem.
Espero que encontremos soluciones.
I am hoping that we can find a solution.
Y gracias por escuchar.
And thank you for listening to me. Thank you for your four questions. The next speaker on this same topic, I believe, is Letitia Rivera.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Leti Rivera.
Good afternoon, my name is Letitia Rivera.
Muchas gracias por darnos la oportunidad esta tarde de escucharnos.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak and for you guys to listen to us.
Yo estoy aquí también uniéndome al apoyo de todos los padres.
I am here to add my voice to this group of parents.
Por la preocupación de lo mismo que es el transporte público para ellos.
For the same reason, which is transportation for our children.
Yo ahorita tengo un niño que él ahorita ya para el otro año ya va a venir también a la high school.
I have a child who next year will be in high school.
Y como muchos padres, ahorita yo este puedo llevarlo, puedo traerlo a la escuela.
And like many parents right now, I can transport him.
Pero va a venir el tiempo que también las familias, que los niños que ya van a venir a estudiar, vamos a tener el mismo problema que muchos de los padres están enfrentando ahorita.
But there could come a time where we could face the same kind of obstacles and challenges that some of these parents are facing.
Entonces pues también este yo me uno también por lo mismo porque no nomás soy yo, somos varias familias. Yo estuve platicando en la escuela.
So I'm adding my voice because there are many families with this worry.
Y son varias familias las que tenemos el mismo problema del transporte.
So there's many families that have the same transportation problems.
Entonces, pues a mí sí me gustaría que pues se hiciera, se hiciera escuchar esto, esto que estamos proponiendo los padres.
So I would like you guys, if you guys could take serious this proposal that our parents are, that the parents are putting forward.
Para que se puedan resolver estos problemas con todas las familias y con todos los estudiantes.
So that these problems that we have with the families and the students can be resolved.
Y pues muchas gracias por escucharnos esta tarde.
And thank you for listening this afternoon. Thank you. The next speaker on this topic is Aricely Calderón.
Well, my fear is always not to be able to talk with a microphone. So thank you very much for having us. I am very happy, not because the situation that bring us here, but because the parent involvement. And actually, we should be very proud about it, because those are parents from the district. And we have been working, not me, not only Jesus, not Herman, not so many people, you administrators, you boards, to encourage parents to express themselves, and they are doing it. And we need to honor them. So thank you very much. And I was in so many meetings where parents always, they want to have a time with me or a time with somebody else to express their concerns about transportation. And actually, I was a little slow till one of them, they say, hey, Araceli, are you gonna help or no? And I think it was a very good voice, because sometimes when we are not having the situation, we are very comfortable. One day, while we were working on the mill levy, I went to a meeting, and somebody asked about transportation. And a parent said, well, I think it is a very nice thing to walk. It is very nice if children can walk because they need to do exercise. And yes, it is very nice to walk. I love to walk. But only when you have the choice. We need to remember that. One thing is a right and another thing is a privilege. So please, parents here were very supportive about mill levy, about so many things. They were always, they are always very helpful if I say, okay, we're gonna do this, and they are trying to do day by day. They are paying taxes, even undocumented, they pay taxes. So they are not failing, they are do their best. We need to support them. Sometimes when we were asking for signatures, some parents didn't want to sign even that they have the problem, because they were afraid, and you know why. So please, help me out and help those parents. And I think we're gonna be, at school, everything is gonna be better. We need your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And if I could have translation for just a second? I want to remind the audience.
Les quiero recordar.
That we won't immediately respond.
Que no le vamos a responder inmediatamente.
But this is not a surprise in that some people are walking or having problems getting to school as a result of the end of some busing?
Que no es una sorpresa para ellos que hay más gente caminando después de que quitaron las rutas.
It's, we're not done with the issue, but it's also a reminder that we changed the time of high school beginning to later.
Que no es el fin de la conversación, pero que en parte también por eso cambiaron los, las horas de que empiezan las escuelas para más tarde.
So there are two or three things mixed here in the transportation.
Hay más, hay una o dos cosas que están mezcladas con este, con este problema.
And that they are always welcome here.
Todos siempre están, tienen la bienvenida de venir aquí.
But they're also welcome, and it may even be easier.
Pero también se les pide.
To speak with their principal?
Que hasta sería más fácil de hablar con el director de su escuela.
For any question?
De cualquier pregunta que tengan.
Because it may feel easier to talk to your principal than it would be to talk to all of us.
Que a la mejor es más fácil hablar con el director de su escuela que hablar con todos ellos.
But you're welcome in either case to express the concern.
Pero de cualquier manera están bienvenidos a venir a expresar sus pensamientos.
And we thank you.
Y les agradecemos.
The rest of the meeting will commence.
Okay, van a seguir con el resto de la, de la agenda de ellos.
And it's very interesting.
Que está muy interesante, si gustan.
But if you'd like to go now and do your homework, you may.
Este, aquí terminó la porción de la transportación, van a seguir con la agenda de ellos. Este, son bienvenidos a quedarse, pero si no, si no quieren, este, pueden salir.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. We have another speaker. You're welcome to come up, Mr. Grant, to the podium. Stephen Grant has asked to speak to the board on a topic that's different from the previous topic, and that's about potential cuts to school funding via Proposition 112, the limitation on fracking. Good evening.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. After listening to all of this, of course, I know that you constantly have your hands full with what is going on, and my concern is one that is looming with this election. It has to do with Prop 112. Proposition 112 is the setback rule which would increase drilling setbacks to 2,500 feet from any drilling unit, and it would really genuinely hinder particularly the Weld County's infrastructure and business. I have here the information, this is from the Weld County Assessor's Office, and if this were to pass, the immediate impact to Weld County schools would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 to 22 million dollars lost, almost immediately. And because of that, I'm gravely concerned. I mean, we're looking for money now for buses and other good programs and projects and so forth, and there's been so much progress that's been made in District 6 that it is a grave concern. So with some of this, I know that some of the stats right now, assessed value in Weld County right now, taxes in Weld County, oil and gas produces 58% of that tax base. And so it is a grave concern. So one of the things that I would ask that you would entertain is that you would unanimously pass a resolution that condemns Prop 112 because of the fact that it takes away local control, it takes away local funding. It really is a barrier to this area. It hurts a lot of our families, I mean, several hundred families here in the Greeley-Evans area. I know our neighborhood is just peppered with it. I've been having conversations with all of our neighbors about it, and they're like, what can we do? This is really scary, you know, for us and for our families. So I know that the Ames Board of Trustees has unanimously passed. I know that the City of Evans City Council has unanimously passed a resolution saying no to Prop 112. They're very concerned about safety, but by the same token, they really feel that this is a community killer here in Northern Colorado. So I would ask that you consider as a board a resolution saying no to Proposition 112. And if you have any questions, I know that the Weld County Assessor is probably a much better resource than I, but I wanted to bring the issue to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming tonight. That concludes the number of individuals interested in speaking to the board. Thank you for that information, I appreciate it. Catching a breath here, work session report, Ms. Crane, when you're ready.
Board of Education President Roger DeWitt began the work session with comments and updates from board members, and then proceeded to review the calendar of upcoming events and future agenda items. Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement Dr. Stacy Dattery provided an update on Fred Charter's School of Innovations turnaround plan. The board was joined by the 2018, 2019 new administrators for dinner, and that concluded the work session.
You know, that sounds a lot like what we just did upstairs for a couple hours. Thank you very much. Dr. Pilch, it may be time for the superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. I'll just first report that I had an opportunity this past weekend to spend time with superintendents from all over the state of Colorado. And you know, many of us face the same difficulties, transportation being one of them. Districts talked of shortages of drivers and how we were raising the wage up for drivers because we had increased the pay for drivers, and so some of our neighboring districts did as well. Lots of conversation about Amendment 73 in addition with superintendents and other experts from around the state concerning the impact of Amendment 73 on districts throughout the state of Colorado. And you know, I will just tell you that what we seem to be hearing over and over again is that a lot of people just don't know about it and just haven't heard about what really Amendment 73 is and how it works. And so I just want to remind folks that we do have factual information about Amendment 73. We're totally within the letter of the law to share that factual information. It is on our district website. We have sent flyers home to parents. We'll be reminding parents to check their email for additional information, factual information about Amendment 73. But I think, you know, it would be a shame if, because people didn't become educated about what this is, school districts throughout the state of Colorado would not have an opportunity to have a different approach to funding of public education in the state of Colorado. And you know, just to remind folks, we're about $2,800 a student behind the national average in per pupil funding. This won't even bring us to that national average. This is an increase of just over $1,600 a pupil here in District Greeley, School District 6 in Greeley and Evans. And with those dollars statewide, it would just bring us about to the middle of the pack nationally. It's not going to pull us to the top, but it'll certainly pull us out of the bottom tier that we're currently in. Today, at the Chamber Board meeting for the Greeley Chamber of Commerce, the board did vote to support Amendment 73, which was a huge action on their part. I do know that they too are, they too are supporting the opposition to 112 that Pastor Grant just talked about. that Pastor Grant just talked about, just to be fair and sharing information on the transportation measures that are out there. The chamber has decided to not take an approach to oppose or support, but rather to just educate folks on the transportation measures that are out there. So this is a big, busy ballot and I think it's really important that all of us pay attention and we have a deep understanding of what this ballot is and has on it and that we're, and we exercise our democratic right to vote. And it may be, this election may be one of the most important ones that all of us in Colorado face. Really seems that there's some important issues on the ballot. So I hope folks will pay attention to that and those ballots will be mailed home here within the next couple of weeks. So they'll be in our mailboxes very soon. It is only a mail-in ballot. So you know, we're gonna know pretty quickly, I would say. I want to share a little bit of good news that was shared with me in relation to our student and learning, student learning and achievement priority one goal for the district. We have some concurrent enrollment data in for this fall semester. Last fall, we had 146 students taking a college course while in their first semester of last school year. This fall semester, we have 269 students taking a college course.
That's pretty cool.
So 146 to 269. Isn't that great news? And then I wanted to share too, as well, the actual number of courses taken. So that was number of students. So some students will take more than one course, right? So last fall, a year ago, we had 242 courses being taken. And this fall, we have 302 courses being taken at the college level. So you know what's really cool about this is that those are courses that will go on a college transcript for a student and that student will take those college courses in that transcript. Are you all taking some college courses? We have a couple of students in the audience nodding their head. They will take those transcripts with them to the college and their parents will not be paying tuition on those courses when they hit the college campus because you all, we have paid that tuition, which is our obligation because we are receiving funding for those students. I also want to share some really exciting news that it's not only about taking the course, it's about also passing that course with a C or better. So last fall, 91% of courses were passed. This fall, no, I just lied, last fall, 91% of courses were passed. This past spring, 95% were passed. So if we keep on that trajectory, this fall semester, we should outpace that 91% from last fall. And then by spring, I would expect it to be at that 95% or higher than it is now. So one other piece of good news I want to share around post-secondary work. You know, we started this work with our strategic plan and we had a lot of work to do around industry certificates and around having students leave high school with certification in an industry, ready to go into the workplace. Well, in 2017, we issued, so a year ago in the spring, we had students, 101 students earned an industry certificate. And then this past spring, we had 131 students earn an industry certificate. So you know, that's a 30% increase, plus one. So pretty exciting and you know, I just want to reassure you all that the investment that we are making around post-secondary readiness and workforce readiness is absolutely making a difference for kids and that the numbers are moving in the right direction and will absolutely, this will have an impact not only on the pocketbooks of parents who are worried about paying for college, but also will have an impact on student achievement.
Well, that's all good news. Thank you very much, ma'am. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and I'd be glad to accept a motion so that we can act on that.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is the consent agenda and it would also require a motion, please, so that we can work on that.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Comments? Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Well, the next item, I need to put my hat on, I think, don't I, Dr. Pilch? There, that's my, that's my, my skit for the evening. It is associated with a proclamation about UNC Week in District 6. It is an action item. So before I get any sillier, can someone offer a motion?
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 adopts the proclamation declaring October 1 through October 6, 2018 as UNC Week in District 6.
Second.
Thank you both. And I certainly will be happy to read the proclamation in just a moment. Dr. Pilch, have you anything you'd like to share before I begin?
I think since you are the one who is wearing the UNC garb, it is up to you, my friend.
Thank you very much for the honor. The proclamation reads as follows. "It's a proclamation of the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6, UNC Week in District 6, October 1 through October 6, 2018. Whereas the University of Northern Colorado, UNC, has been located in the heart of Greeley since the university's founding in 1889, and whereas UNC is among the top public universities in the United States and is particularly renowned for its College of Education and Behavioral Sciences, which produces some of the best teachers, principals, and administrators in the nation, and whereas many hundreds of UNC graduates have gone on to work in District 6 schools and offices even to this day, and whereas UNC's annual Homecoming Week for 2018 begins on Monday, October 1 and runs through Saturday, October 6, and whereas it is appropriate that our school district help recognize, celebrate, and support opportunities for quality higher education for our students and community, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 declares that October 1 through October 6, 2018, be recognized as UNC Week in District 6 and that district staff and students be encouraged to wear UNC apparel that week and to proudly display bear flags, pennants, and banners at their homes, schools, and offices during Homecoming Week." Would be glad to have a show of hands. Anybody in the room attend UNC ever? Anybody? Okay, well, some people do go there. And so we certainly stand prepared to say thanks and continue your good work to UNC. I'd be glad to hear of any comments or questions at this time? Perhaps a roll call would be in order?
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Go Bears.
Allison, that's an a.
I'll accept that as an a. I'm sorry. Yes, we'll accept that as an a.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you very much. It's a little warm. The next item is a delight, as always, to bring to the attention of those in the room and the board. The Council of Student Representatives, otherwise known as the Student Council of Representatives, both the same business. It's an opportunity for students from all over the district, all of the high schools in the district, to gather together and work with one another to erase some of those competitions that we encourage among high schools and work cooperatively to build the district from within and to let district administrators know of their passions and their interests and their concerns. So, Dr. Pilch, I know that you may have something else to say about the presentation, but I know that Sidney Martin, the president of that organization, is here with a colleague. And so may I invite them to come forward?
Please do.
Okay. Come on down.
And while they're making their way to the podium, I'll just share, as you all are aware, this is the one student, organized student group that actually provides direct input and feedback and information to our Board of Education on a regular basis. I'll ask the ladies to share a little bit about how often you meet and what you do, if you would, please, so that everybody has an understanding of that. But this is the one formalized group that we interact with on a fairly regular basis. So welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Sidney Martin. I am a senior at Frontier Academy and I have been on this board for two years, last year being elected the secretary and this year being elected the president. And this is my friend Abby.
I'm also a senior, but I go to Early College Academy and I'm just the liaison for ECA and I've only been on the board for this year.
So as the Student Council of Representatives, we hold bi-monthly meetings where we discuss community service events that we will be holding and ways that we can better our community and unite our schools in the district. We will also be attending one Board of Education meeting a month to give you a report of how our year is going, to inform you of any issues we have seen arise within our schools and to invite you to join us in our community slash district-wide events.
So far, we've had two successful meetings this year. The first meeting, we met with all the school's principals. We talked about the expectations and what it means to be a part of the student board. We also took a pretty great group picture. The second meeting, we took several personality tests, including the color tests, in order to learn about the type of leaders we are and that vast contrast of leaders within our community and within our group. We did this to recognize that there are many types of leaders and that each type of leader has an important role on the board and that it is important to have many different types of leaders.
Our next meeting will be held tomorrow, September 25, where we will begin planning our first district-wide event of the year, the Second Annual District 6 Talent Show on October 26 at 7:00 PM. So mark your calendars as we would love to see our Board of Education members there to show support. We are going to be planning and finalizing dates for auditions that are to be held at each of the schools to gain traction in every school. The audition process begins next week on Monday, October 1 and we would like to invite at least one of you to attend each audition date to assist our student board members in judging auditions. This is not imperative that you are there. However, we would love to give you all the opportunity to work with us throughout the execution of our talent show.
We have a list of the audition dates and times that you're invited to attend that will be going around. We haven't finalized all the locations of the auditions, but we will by the end of this week. If you'd like to attend and judge any of these, please just email Sidney. Our emails are on the bottom of that sheet.
That is all that we have for you today. Thank you so much for making time for us this meeting. And if you are willing to help judge auditions, feel free to email Abby or I.
Okay, just one second. But you can't just escape there may be someone with a question. You know that's a possibility, right?
Sorry, of course.
I'm just saying, you're welcome here. Are there any questions or comments from board members? All right. Go do your homework and thanks, both of you, for coming here tonight and representing the council.
Thank you.
Good night. The next item is the first read of Policy IHB, Equivalence of Services, Title I. This is an information item and, Dr. Pilch, I always turn to you for information.
Thank you, sir. This is a new policy, so it's a first read. It is a policy required by federal law. It does seem that one of the ways that our federal government is making sure that we are implementing their new rules and the new legislation is by also requiring us to implement policy that requires us to implement their new rules. So what you see here is the new expectation rule around Title I in relation to the ESA application. It's important to, the Every Student Succeeds Act application, that is. It's important to point out that our application has already received approval from the state of Colorado.
I like that. Thank you very much for that report. Other comments or questions from board members at this point? I guess we will have the chance to look at this again at a meeting near tonight. The next item is an action item. It is one we spoke about last time, Revisions to D fiscal management policies. I'd be glad to accept a motion on this at this time.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the revisions to Policy DAB, Financial Administration, and DEA funds from local tax sources as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch?
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Again, this is based on changes in state legislation. It's really a minor change. We were already doing most of what is required. We changed some language in the policy that explains that this is required in accordance with the Public School Finance Transparency Act.
Okay, and let's see. We've done a...
This is a revision tonight.
So are there, are there questions from board members at this point? We've had a chance to read through the material.
I apologize, Mr. DeWitt. There's two policies here. Are you taking action on both at the same time?
DAB and DEA?
So let me talk about DEA. I apologize.
No, that's fine.
It is also related to the new state legislation around Mill levy override sharing with charter schools. And so we've added a paragraph of language that we're required to add, but of course, that's been our, that was our practice anyway, a year ago before this was in legislation to share with our charters.
It's nice to know that we're leading the tribe sometimes.
We're leading the way. Well, in truth, we are actually showing people that, yes, you can do this and it actually might be a better idea than not doing it.
Well, with no other comments or questions, I guess we'll ask for the question. Call the question.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is the second read and adoption of Policy AEE, Waiver of State Law and Regulation. It is an action, so I'd be glad to have a motion before we begin.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 adopts Policy AEE, Waiver of State Law and Regulation, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you both. We had a little conversation about this last time. Open the door for this for any member of the board. Dr. Richard?
So with the applications for waivers and waivers that are received by charter schools and schools of innovation, is this a process that we currently use?
Not exactly. The requirement to actually post the charter waivers was not in law before. So they were expected to post them. We asked them and encouraged them to post them, but they weren't necessarily required to by law, which they are now. Whether we put it in policy or not, they're gonna be required to do that.
Okay. And is this policy required by law?
No, it is not. It's a policy that CASB is recommending. Our cabinet recommends it to you all as a board, really believing that it puts into writing in policy our process should someone, whether it be us or one of our district charter schools, want to waive policy or state law and regulation, then it codifies for us what that process would be. Go to policy and look it up. But it's also in state law, so I understand that's, that's your question.
Right. And so just for explanation, I'll be voting against this. In the time that I've been on the board, I cannot remember a time when we have actually removed a policy. And so being, you know, of a mind that we should keep our policy manuals as lean as possible when it's not required, when it's already in state law and accessible, that information, I will be voting against that.
Thank you, ma'am. Comments from anyone else? I hear from our leadership that it wouldn't hurt to do this. We don't have anything on fire that would require it. But I get the impression that sometimes I don't come in with a complete understanding of all the things that are going on in the district. And so I listen to district leadership and I'll be voting in favor. Other comments? Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
No.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-1.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next item is a report on Innovation 2020, Strengthening Partnerships, Priority 2, Parents and Families. This is an action item and I'd be happy to get a motion.
I move the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the membership of the district and school accountability committees as presented.
Second.
Thanks to all three of you. Dr. Pilch?
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. I'm going to pass this to Dr. Dattery, our Assistant Superintendent of Academic Achievement. of Academic Achievement, who also oversees this portion of Innovation 2020 around strengthening partnerships priority two, which concerns our district accountability committee. Dr. Dattery?
Thank you, Superintendent Pilch, President DeWitt, and members of the board. As per state law, the following action you will be taking tonight is required by the local school board, and that is the approval of the membership of the district accountability committee and the approval of the membership of the school accountability committees, plural. So to provide you a little bit of background on these committees, the Colorado Department of Education publishes annually a district accountability handbook and puts it out on its website, and this provides an outline of the requirements and the responsibilities for state, district, and school stakeholders in the state's accountability process established by the Education Accountability Act of 2009. The Board of Education, therefore, then, is responsible for either appointing or creating a process for electing members of a district accountability committee. And the process in Greeley-Evan School District Six, as outlined in our bylaws, is to have a representative from each school serve on the district accountability committee. A complete list of the members of our district accountability committee for the 2018-2019 school year can be found in your board packet and board docs. Based on the state law reflected in the district accountability handbook, the Board of Education charges the district, the local accountability committee, with specific responsibilities during the academic school year. These responsibilities are outlined in our district accountability committee bylaws as well, and they are reviewed annually at our first meeting. In addition to the district accountability committee membership approval from you all this evening and taking action on that, each school is also responsible for establishing a school accountability committee. And you can also find, enclosed in your board docs, the documents for the complete membership list of the District Six School Accountability Committee. So I appreciate your time this evening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you, Dr. Dattery.
Thank you.
As it turns out, I do have a question.
Okay.
And it may already be answered, but anyway, we had a room full of people who were concerned enough to come in and chat with the board about a problem. Would the SAC be willing to pick this problem up if they heard about a concern on campus or on the way?
The school accountability committees?
Right.
Absolutely. They have parent representatives. The school leadership principal typically is in charge of pulling their SAC together and listening to, having kind of a forum time where they listen to concerns and listen to issues that they may need to tackle at the building level. And any of these issues are absolutely able to be addressed at a school accountability committee meeting.
Well, let's just encourage people to feel that they have a lot of places they can turn to when they run into a concern.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, and Mr. DeWitt, if I may add, please, you know, the power of that is, then the principal can really begin to understand what the issues are, like from which neighborhoods, you know, what are the issues? And then the principal can bring those to us. I know for facts that at least two of the routes that we had not planned to reinstate, that we reinstated, one last year, one this year, was because of principal feedback after they had heard from families, and they had enough data to bring to us to say, you know, there are 67 kids coming from this neighborhood, and they are walking, you know, this far to get here, which meant we had to do something to try to fix that. So that, really, that is one way to get a problem like this solved. Now, I do know that the assistant superintendents went out with the families. They've already sent me a text saying they've got lots of good information, and that they'll begin working on the issues there. But the SAC is absolutely a great place to take that kind of a concern.
Well, I certainly have no doubt that our staff will respond appropriately. But it's a little bit of a charge to come into a board meeting when someone could just go to their local school and say, you know, we're having this, and what's going on, and can you get back to me on that? So just another lesson to the community that there's a lot of ways to talk.
Another venue.
And many of you are attending the SAC meetings at your school that you represent, right? Aren't some of you attending some of those? Yeah?
Other comments from board members, please? Thanks. This isn't our first rodeo, but please, depending on how this goes, please thank those who are interested in being part of the district accountability committee and the school accountability committees, because we know there's a little bit of time involved in supporting schools.
Thank you. I will pass that along.
Thank them for their efforts.
Thank you.
We had a motion and a second. It might be time to do a roll call. Ms. Crane on this item.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Mrs. Solis?
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero.
Lovely. Thank you. Next item is an information item on Innovation 2020. It's an update on operational and organizational effectiveness, Priority Three. That involves talent. Dr. Pilch?
Thank you, President DeWitt. So this is actually an update as a part of our strategic plan work of Innovation 2020, whereas the last one was an update and a board action. So there won't be an action with this one tonight. But we have Ms. Overton, who's made her way to the podium, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and we are excited to give you an update on how we're doing on our Innovation 2020 Operational Effectiveness, Priority Three, around talent. So Ms. Overton, it's yours.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Good evening, President DeWitt, and members of the board. And Dr. Pilch, tonight, I am here, as she mentioned, to talk about the Priority Three and our talent. Well, I think I am.
The lifeguard is swimming toward you.
There she goes. There she comes. Okay, there we go. And on this slide, you'll see that our district mission and vision statement, to which all of our work does align. The priority that I will discuss tonight supports values, commitment to excellence, innovation, and continuous improvement, as well as viewing diversity as an asset. Of the four goals that you see on this slide here, I'll be talking about the operational organizational effectiveness update. And with that goal area, we will be innovative and accountable to the community through measurable outcomes and continuous improvement. While there are a lot of projects and tasks that engage human resource team members, as well as other district staff, on a daily basis, everything we do works to maximize the efforts to support people from hiring to retiring at the end of their career, long career, we hope. Priority Three in talent, the objective is to develop a plan for recruiting, hiring, and retaining employees. There are six areas of focus that support this objective. Develop an aggressive and comprehensive strategy to hire and retain teachers and support staff through supporting diverse instructional programs for students learning English. Continuing to develop the state performance management system for our certified staff, and developing a new rubric for the classified evaluation system. And enhancing the relationships with UNC, CSU, Colorado, and Ames to create a pipeline for recruiting talent. Implementing key strategies to review why people choose to work in District Six and who choose to Work with professional development department to support induction. Maximize our electronic resources to make the hiring process easier for our applicants and for our principals. The three areas that I want to talk about tonight, recruiting, hiring, and retention. The first one is recruiting. And key actions around recruitment include exploring alternatives that give us access to people who want to teach but haven't traveled the traditional approach to licensure. We attend county workforce programs utilizing their online applications applicant and to post jobs on those application programs. We continue to explore urban education programs, that is, university programs, with a specific eye on meeting the needs of inner-city and urban education. We participate in UNC classes and special education, teacher prep programs, and various workshops and conferences which expand our presence. This chart above that you're looking at compares 2017 hiring season and the 2018 hiring season. The orange line on the top indicates the total number of people applying for positions in the identified category at the bottom, and using the column of information on the right. For example, the elementary positions totaled just over 50 in 2017-18, and there were over 1,800 applicants for those jobs. The gray line identifies the average number of applicants for each position. Given this information, one can see that the middle and high school applicant pool has improved from one year to the next. While it's too soon to determine a trend, efforts to recruit secondary candidates in various fairs may have helped the district increase its applicant pools. Additionally, the perception of the district has changed, and we continue to receive feedback about people wanting to work in Greeley because of the leadership, the community support of the MLO, and the great initiatives moving forward. We experience longer lines in the recruiting fairs. Data from the elementary columns show a decrease in applicants from 2017 to 2018, and this demonstrates a trend of fewer people entering the education workforce, which is something we see statewide, indeed nationwide. Not represented in that graph are the number of candidate pools that remain open through the months of the hiring season. And we do that for three various reasons. One is build a pool of applicants for upcoming hiring, maintaining a group of people who may be contacted in the event of an open position, and providing longer posting timeframe to capture candidates' attention who look outside of our five-day window. Using social media has been successful in attracting bus drivers and pares by boosting our presence. For example, Facebook, LinkedIn, and Twitter posts are made with information about what is on the horizon. And we use data to measure our success by tracking the number of applicants who are hired from our efforts at a recruiting fair. We can connect those new hires with alumni who are teaching in the district. Of late, we have sent several employees of color to some of the fairs to engage with candidates of color, to tell them about the good opportunities that we have in District Six. After finishing recruiting in the spring, we move into the hiring season lasting throughout the summer. For the past year, human resource personnel have been reviewing the functionalities of the online applicant system. We have designed a new online process that provides instant information for key stakeholders for when background checks and license checks are requested, when salary computations are completed, and when the candidate accepts the job. This has improved communication and provides the hiring authority instant information every step of the way. Our timeframe from job offer to letter of intent has decreased from two weeks to five days. We partnered with Academic Achievement to take our new employee orientation to the teachers during new educator training, and this is well-received. It was a huge time saver for both the payroll and the human resources department. This measure identified on this slide is new this year. We will be looking for the number of applicants hired in APT and certified positions, but this year, we began with which candidates received interviews. Of the people hired this year, 22% are people of color. This slide shows the breakdown of race of our 212 new hires. This past hiring season, we tracked the number of candidates of color in our APT postings for various positions. And these data on this slide represent the number of candidates in that pool, the number of candidates of color who made the cut to the screening and team interviews as well. There were 20 APT positions since February 1st, 122 interviews for all of those positions. 27 of the candidates interviewed were people of color. Six of the candidates of color were offered positions in the district, and five of them are now District Six team members. The data you're reviewing here are the total new hires to the district. It doesn't contain rehires or people that were promoted. When you break down the hiring of classified staff, schools hired 24%, and special education and nutrition tied each hiring about 19%. Many people always ask, who is in the schools' classified category? That's library assistants, instructional assistants, crossing guards, parent liaisons, lunch monitors, ISS monitors. Monthly, we are reviewing job descriptions by department as a first step toward building continuity within job families. This year, the classified hiring process is being revised and rolled out to hiring authorities so that it will mirror the certified electronic The third component of the Priority Three objective is retaining quality staff. People in support positions may indicate they are looking for areas to grow and for potential promotion opportunities. And this year, human resources launched the first substitute conference, which provided key training areas for any of our substitutes who attended. Their biggest concerns became our training areas. For example, safety in the classroom, cultural proficiency, and the top 10 things you need to know about working with students with special needs. Even Dr. Pilch addressed the audience of substitutes by talking to them about the importance of their work in maintaining student achievement. A new teaching mentor program called Power Up was launched this August, and human resource leaders are conducting exit interviews with people who leave hard-to-fill positions, as well as administrative positions. This data is shared with the superintendent and others to determine if any course of action need be taken. This slide is good news for District Six. One measure we used for employee retention is that District Six will be higher than the state average. The state average for retention is 80.29%. We surpassed the state in 2017-18 with a rate of 81.5. While this is exciting to finally pass the state average, we still have a lot of work to do to understand why people stay in District Six and why some choose to leave. We want them to have the same perception that we have about working in this great place, and so we've got some work to do. All of our employees, all of our employee categories increased from the previous year, as seen in the graphic on the left. When the calendar was approved with six district professional development days, we knew there would be opportunities to provide classified trainings on these days. Classified Council is reviewing bylaws and expanding membership to include all sites like transportation, nutrition, and facilities. With the launch of the updated evaluation process for classified staff, we look forward to increasing conversations between staff and supervisors this year with our new rubric, evaluation rubric. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have about our operational and organizational goal.
Well, thank you very much. I bet we're going to take a second to think up something here. Anybody have a reaction or a question? Dr. Richard, please.
Well, it's exciting to see that substitute conference, because while we would prefer not to have substitutes in the classroom, it is a reality, and so it's great that we're setting them up for success and our students up for success. The other one that, on that same page, was the, were the career ladders. Would you tell us more about that?
You bet. As we look at job descriptions and look at job descriptions within families, then we're looking at opportunities to find ways that we can build promotion opportunities. So we'll start with like a technology tech one, and then we move to a technology tech two. And as that person gets certifications, they'll go to the next one. And as they get more certifications, they go to tech three. And as they get more, they go to tech four. And so it's the opportunity for us to keep somebody over long periods of time so that they have promotion opportunities.
And so how about in the certified APT?
So we do look at, right now, we're looking at where are opportunities for teachers to grow. Sometimes it appears that it might just be an administrative path that they go. So they become a teacher, they become a department chair, and then they become an assistant principal or something forward. We're looking for opportunities for people who don't want to be assistant principals or principals. They want, they might want to travel an instructional route, so they might become an instructional coach. They might become a coordinator of different instructional activities at the district level. So we're looking for those opportunities to find ways to keep teachers here and help them grow and serve as leaders.
Ms. Pappas, please.
This may or may not be part of what you were talking about tonight, but I am curious about the substitutes. So I think that we're doing quite a bit to keep substitutes and hire substitutes. I'm wondering about just overall, the, are we, do we have enough substitutes to fill positions as they're needed? Are we still having to have coverage in the buildings? How's that whole process working?
Both. We... We, every week, or every two weeks, we have a substitute orientation where we bring the new people on. And so we're constantly bringing people in to hire. You'll see it in the board packet that we have, that you approve in the consent agenda, where we bring them in. What we're trying to do to really help is encourage them to work more. We have a lot of substitutes that only want to work one or two days, three days, four days a month. So we're looking at opportunities to help train them, to help shore them up so they'll be ready and want to engage in working in different schools. A lot of times, they're retirees, and they only want to work a few days, or they can only work a few days because of other commitments that they have. And so we're constantly talking with them to see what we can do. You're right that there are people that are still doing sub-coverage in the classroom from the building level, and we're working to try to support the principal as that happens. We have a full-time substitute specialist, and she's in contact on a daily basis with principals or with others. She recruits people. She also tries to find people that will take long-term positions. She, you should see her work. She does, she'll find somebody here at this building, and then she'll say, no, call them and say, no, go to this building, take this one. So it's really kind of strategic, the way she works. Thank you.
So I will share with you that we actually started the school year with 30 more subs than we had last year, so that we're moving in the right direction with subs. But, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the conversations with the superintendent, substitute teachers are still, I mean, there are districts, rural districts, that are actually have, they've actually used the law to get a waiver from the state, to waive state law around substitutes being required to have a substitute license, so that they can just have anyone, just not anyone be a substitute teacher without them being able to get a sub-license.
That can pass a background check.
As long as they pass a background check. We will say background check. So it's an issue around the state, and we're going to keep working on it. We're also working with the university to help us to explore some creative ways of utilizing student teachers or utilizing practicum students and that. So we're working on that. We'll keep working on it.
Thank you.
Ms. Haley, please.
As you know, I'm incredibly biased that you put the human in human resources, and this is just more evidence of that. One of the things that's really impressive to me is when I went to UNC a few years ago, the relationship with the district was less than positive. And now it doesn't matter if it's a provost, or the dean within SEBs, or the people who are placing practicum candidates or student teachers, they have nothing but positive things to say about you and your staff and how our district is really open to working with our teacher candidates. And it's greatly appreciated on both sides. So kudos to everybody involved, including Dr. Pilch on that.
Thank you, sir. I'll convey that message to the HR team as well.
Ms. Solis, please.
So we had the opportunity to have dinner with some new administrative staff tonight, and I was really excited in asking them what brought them to our district, and to hear them say it was our diversity. They were just excited about the diversity that we have in our district, and that we are so supportive of that diversity, and that we welcome it and consider it such an asset. And so to hear people coming to our community and that being one of the reasons, that's really, really exciting.
Thank you. That is...
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Matthews?
Just since we heard our presentation, or not a presentation, but a number of people comment on transportation this evening, I was wondering how we're addressing hiring bus drivers, the challenge of that, and what would it take to solve that problem?
Well, we sure look at that, we look at that kind of data. Often, we try to find ways to get commercial folks in. We raise the salaries of the bus drivers. We've, you know, we offer training for them to come in. At the beginning, we give them training. We, from our side and the human resources part, we have, we attended different fairs like workforce readiness places, the Weld County Workforce Center, post our jobs. We also, I was going to say something else. We send out, what I mentioned a little bit earlier, was we send out on social media. We try to attract people. We've gone to Craigslist to list jobs that we have and see if we can get extra people. We've found that boosting out Facebook gets about 3,500 people, and we've had between 6 and 10, each time we do that, between 6 and 10 people that want to come.
The good news is, for the first time ever, they are continually getting applicants in and doing interviews. And they, I, we met last week, I guess, with the manager who oversees all the hiring of bus drivers, and he shared with us that they would go months without even having a single bus driver applicant. So at least our increase in salary is getting us applicants. And then there's, you got to pass the background check, you got to be trained.
Able to drive.
And you got to be willing to actually come to work and stay at work. Part of what we've also done is, over the summer, we, anybody who wanted to stay on for the summer and be paid through the summer, we found them a job in the summer, whether that was driving summer school routes or activity trips. And in some cases, it was cleaning buses and getting buses ready for the new school year. We've also worked hard to make sure everybody knows that they get benefits. The driver I rode with here a few weeks ago told me that he saw one of our signs that said bus drivers wanted full benefits, and he thought that cannot be true, can't be true. And he called the district office and found out it was true, and he, you know, he's retired from another profession and has a decent income, but he didn't like having to pay for his own health insurance. So he came to work for us and is really, I think, is finding a lot of joy in the work also because of the benefits. So we're, I mean, we're pulling every trick we have out of the hat.
We do.
If you have any other ideas, let us know. We're trying. Let us know.
Grand. Well, I noticed that we acted this evening to support some more hiring of substitutes. So that mission, too, continues. And we'd rather have our full-time employees in the classroom where they ought to be, but there are reasons for them not to be. So we really do want someone competent to take that person's place short term, or, as it sometimes occurs, a little bit longer. But thanks for keeping an eye on that. I wanted to just confirm the word induction. That's a process where a new employee in the state of Colorado as a teacher has some steps to go through.
It could be anybody that's certified teacher or administrator. They have to go through a certain number of courses that by law that we are required to give, that they are required to take, and then they become certified in the state, or the state will, they're inducted into the new profession. And that's completed by Stacey's department in professional development, and then we track it with the state. We work with them to make sure that they get their, from an initial license to a professional license. Once you've completed induction, you can move in that direction. The state gives you three years to be able to complete that.
But there's quite a bit of individual initiative. It's you who's getting you through this three-year process. But we're there to provide those things that are needed.
We have a mentor that also meets with these folks so that they have the opportunity to learn and grow in the profession. That's part of the induction process as well.
Can you hint at some of what might be involved if you and I were meeting and I was an outgoing, let me rephrase that. If I were a teacher who was leaving my job for one reason or another, what would that interview, briefly, what would that exit interview involve? Because in the past, we've done sort of a blind survey electronically, which I think many of us were suspicious about.
So I meet with them. We typically follow the, we're looking to expand it any way that we can, but we're looking at the hard-to-fill areas right now. And when I do, when I meet with people that are leaving particularly, I see that they've resigned or they're in the process of resigning. I have three questions. One is, what did, you know, how are things here for you? I know you're leaving. What are, what things did we do well? And then try to capitalize on that. I talk it through with them. Well, what could, you know, what could we have done better for you? And then I, and then is there anything we could do that would make you come back? And I ask a lot more questions in between, but those are the three main categories that I have.
Well, that's helpful. I think that's the right step. Thank you. The other question I have, oh, I guess it's an observation. When we talk about having our district look more like the population we serve...
Yes.
It's kind of encouraging that we're taking numbers now and saying, well, this is how many people we have. In the past, we've encouraged ourselves to look more like the people we serve, but there hasn't been any real, any real steps to show where we are and how we're progressing. So at 22 or 23%, I'd say that's a good start, and I thank you for counting and keeping track of the numbers and watching. We don't change things unless we have a good sense of where we are. And so I think that's particularly appropriate.
Thank you.
For that. Other comments? I got shooting the news. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Well, somehow we've managed to complete our agenda. Thanks very much. We'll see you next month. This meeting is adjourned.